Good evening, everybody. It's 6 o'clock. And I would like to call this regular meeting of the Lansing School District Board of Education to order. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, thank you very much. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Body? I know he's present.
Yeah.
Dr. Burrows?
Here.
Ms. Hodgen? Mrs. Lawrence?
Here.
Mrs. Lilge?
Here.
Mr. Lopez?
Present.
Mrs. Moore?
Here.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Present.
Mrs. Willis?
Present.
Ms. President.
Thank you very much. Any additions to the agenda this evening?
A report. Report from the I- ISOA.
Okay, we'll make that number five under Routine Matters and Old Business.
Thank you.
And I know we have one subtraction from the agenda. Sam, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, we are not going to be going into closed session this evening. Okay, and before we get started, I just want to remind members of the public and attendees this evening. If you have questions about anything that we're discussing this evening, putting them in the chat is not the way that we will be addressing questions. If you'd like to address the board, you need to register in advance to make public comment. You can do that on our website. If you have specific questions, please reach out to board members or superintendent. And again, you can find our contact info, phone numbers, emails, all that stuff on our website, lansingschools.net. Thank you very much. That said, I don't believe we have any public comment tonight. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right, then we will move right along and get started on our first presentation for this evening instructional updates. Sam, take it away.
Thank you. Delsa and I and members of the executive team are going to present an instructional update. Actually, this is an update from a presentation we did on December 17th, when it was our beyond screen to screen update. So we want to get further updates and show you the plans that we have upcoming. So, Delsa, whenever you're ready.
Dr. Chapman, you're muted.
I'm so sorry. I need screen share capability.
Dr. Chapman, you still cannot share?
All set. Thank you, Lynette. Thank you Superintendent Sinocropi and good evening Board of Education and Lansing community. This update from the executive team and instructional division serves as our safe learning plan. An overview of what will be shared this evening includes the following three points: beyond-screen-to-screen highlights, metrics, and data analysis, along with safe learning logistics. Beyond-screen-to-screen highlights, we were successful in convening a group of 25 to 30 stakeholders in the month of October that collaborated, provided input. And some of the highlights are as follows as it relates to our screen-to-screen remote learning and how we would move forward in the COVID-19 pandemic. We successfully opened the school year with our board-approved remote learning plan and would stay in that plan until deemed safe to return. Through that committee, we also had equitable distribution of nearly 10,000 technology devices for both teaching and learning. Because we wanted to be equitable in our remote learning scenario, we made sure that all students and staff were able at all times to have access to internet connectivity. And therefore, we were successful in distributing over 850 hotspots. Additional highlights include the following: we heard the urgency and we answered to the need of parents and caregivers who although in the pandemic, still had a responsibility to their children and families to work. And so through Sergio Keck and his community engagement, we were able and are still operating with success learning labs. As we moved forward, once we went into full remote learning, we began to answer to and give consideration to the amount of screen time for both learners and for instructors. Through that consideration, we successfully implemented at the start of second marking period, what we call A-Day, asynchronous learning and support from teachers on Wednesdays. Additional highlight includes the following, and that's very important. We are a very diverse district, and so we have students that are in need of support services. And through our beyond-screen-to-screen collaboration and our stakeholders, we have been successful and are continuing to support those populations with servicing. And finally, the final two highlights we would like to share this evening. Through the beyond-screen-to-screen committee, stakeholder collaboration, we were able to form focus teams allowing for instructional, operational, and community-based input. Out of one of the focus teams, we were convinced and through input from our instructional division, we deemed it necessary to have or establish a COVID-19 coordination team that provides to us documents specific to response and the metrics dashboard, which we will be providing a highlight or an update on this evening. And now, moving on to metrics and data analysis. We have been consistent, the executive team, the operational division, and the instructional division, to make sure that we are continuous in taking a very close look at the metrics and to collect and analyze data as it relates to us thriving during the COVID-19 pandemic. We have been fortunate, as stated, to have a COVID-19 coordination team. And through that team, which is led by our nurse Sue Willer and all of the nursing staff here in the Lansing School District, we are able to provide a weekly update through our COVID-19 metrics dashboard. The data that you see before you is dated January 29th. So it was posted after review and analysis one week ago as of tomorrow. With this data, we can see that we are not in any of those areas at low risk. Starting with looking at new daily cases, yes, the trend is going onward, is moving downward. But if we take a look at our target, our target is not where it should be for Ingham County. When we think further and look at new cases per 1 million and new cases per 100,000, taking into consideration what that looks like over a week's time or what's medically termed or scientifically termed even close to being able to consider, which we would consider being at low risk if we have less than 40 cases. Our aim would be to have 700, I'm sorry, 7 to 20 cases. But if you take a very close look at Ingham County, we have 227.9 on average. And we are even higher overall than the state of Michigan at 185.3. The lesser of the cases at 100,000, we have similar data. We would consider to be low risk with five to nine cases. And our aim is to have less than five cases. But you can notice and see in Ingham County, we are yet higher than the state average of consideration at 23.7, which puts us still at a moderate and not a low risk. When we take a close look at the positivity rate of diagnostic tests or testing, our aim would be less than 3%. We would give consideration to be low risk on those positivity rates at less than 5%. But as you can see, as of last Friday, January 29th, in Ingham County, the positivity rate of diagnostic tests was still at 7.3%, which once again is higher than the average in the state of Michigan. And finally, other considerations that we look to and we analyze through our COVID metrics dashboard. We take a very serious look at ongoing monitoring for the needs of our special population. We also take a look, very close look at what are our staffing needs? And what are, how are we applying or should we, where is the need to apply more rigorous mitigation strategies? When we take a close look at if there are any new cases that have developed among our staff members and/or our students and their families. Continuing on with meta, metrics and data, I'm sorry. We began to actually, with the help of our COVID collaboration or coordination team, take a very close look at metrics and how those metrics could possibly be affecting us as an organization. The data that you see before you comes from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. And it shares with us the top five settings for new COVID-19 outbreaks, and I would like to emphasize the term outbreak, in Michigan over a course of the week, January the 21st through the 28th. If you take a very close look at the diagram, you will see in red, the highest setting has occurred in long-term care facilities. The second highest would be very specific to us as an organization. The data designated by the orange line is specific to K-12 school settings. And that would definitely include us. Of those outbreaks that have occurred in K-12 settings, the majority of them have been found in Region 1. The counties that are associated in Region 1 are listed for your viewing. And you will notice that I have highlighted in red, Ingham County. So Ingham County is one of the counties in Region 1 that throughout the state has had the largest and most frequent number of outbreaks, very specific to K-12 settings. So let's talk a little bit about an outbreak. What is an outbreak and how is that defined? According to the Council of State and Territorial Epidemiologists from their Preparedness Newsletter and Communication as of July 12th of 2020, a COVID-19 outbreak is defined as follows: two or more laboratory-confirmed COVID-19 cases among students or staff with onset within a 14-day period who have the following similarities or characteristics: they are epidemiologically linked, they do not share a household, and they are not identified as close contacts of each other in another setting during a standard case investigation or contact tracing. We promised and we delivered through our actionable timeline that was shared on December 17th that we would definitely move forward with collecting our second set of data because we have to have input from our staff and from our families. The data that you see before you was collected. And it was, there was an extension, over a week extension for both staff and families to give thought to the questions in the commitment form. And I want to emphasize commitment. This was not simply a survey. It was actually a commitment to either hybrid instruction or remaining 100% remote for the remainder of this school year. At the conclusion of the extended timeframe of providing this opportunity to staff, the response that we received is before you on the screen. The number of staff members in the Lansing School District that would prefer to or are choosing, considering and/or committing to hybrid instruction, reports out at 24%. Staff members who are requesting and are committing to stay in 100% remote learning is at 76%. These numbers share with us what the choices are amongst the Lansing School District staff. Not only did we ask our staff members, but we provided the same opportunity to our families. After 24 hours, really began to pull in data. But we felt that the data was still coming in slowly as we approached the closing deadline. So through our communications department and through the efforts of school-level leadership, we sent out consistently robocalls and through social media messaging and through posting to our websites to remind all families that we wanted to hear from all of them. We extended the timeframe for response to over a week. And these are the results. After continuous reach-out and communication and with the extension, families that would like to commit to hybrid instruction came in at 25%. 75% of our families have elected or would like to remain in remote learning for the remainder of the school year. So with that, based on the options and based on the response from our families in particular, the safe learning plan from the Lansing School District Executive Team and Instructional Division is being presented this evening as follows. For students in grades pre-K through 8, and these would be non-high schools self-contained students, if they are a part of the 25% that are committing the families have chosen to remain remote, those families and students will follow the current screen-to-screen remote learning daily schedule. So that will stay intact and will not be a change for those students and their families. The safe learning plan for grades 7 through 12 in our high schools, remote learning with onsite support or onsite student support centers, or what we are terming as our SSCs. If you are a part of the 25% of students in your 712 at the high school, the hybrid selection schedule is presented before you this evening as follows: Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, AM, remote learning. On the afternoons of those same days at our high schools, students would have the opportunity to participate in onsite student support center activities, intervention, and lesson support. Wednesday would still be A-Day for our 712 students as well. And that too would be the day at the high school level that we would do deep cleaning and address any mitigation protocols and/or changes or redirections that would be necessary. And once again, if you're a 712 high school student and you're part of that 75% and want to remain remote, your schedule would remain intact as it is today. So with safe learning, yes, there is a plan, but we definitely have to continue on and broaden our logistics. With those logistics, we would execute a risk mitigation protocol per CDC guidelines specific to social distancing, masking, and hand washing. We also would report vaccine accessibility for staff desiring to have completed the series prior to hybrid instruction. I would like to emphasize staff desiring to have completed the series. We want to make it clear that the vaccine is not a condition for employment. However, we do respect the staff members that have a desire to be vaccinated in order to, or for them, if they want to, be able to safely, from their standard, to participate in hybrid instruction. Continuing on with safe learning logistics, transportation will be available for those participating in the hybrid model. Nutrition and the services thereof will continue as well. Students will receive prepackaged meals at dismissal on in-person days. Food distribution sites will continue to cover remote learning days and daily breakfasts. The recommendation put forth this evening by Superintendent Sinocropi and the executive team is as follows. The executive team recommends the safe learning plan be adopted. And secondly, the safe learning plan be implemented on a target date to be determined based on metrics. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman. We are open to questions or comments. Mrs. Lawrence?
Questions then. This is probably not super important, but can you tell me what a self-contained student is?
A self-contained student has only one teacher during the day. So we were differentiating between the high schools that are 712 and a building such as Gardner-Dwight Rich, where the students are in 7th and 8th grade are with their teachers all day, one teacher.
Okay, makes sense. When and if the plan is implemented and some kids return to the hybrid model, is there the potential that teacher assignments would change? Would the kids who are doing the hybrid plan be reassigned to the teachers who are doing the hybrid teaching?
There is that possibility. You know, as we were looking at data, it doesn't always match up in every case for teachers who wanted to teach hybrid and the number of students at that particular grade level. So there possibly could be some changes.
Okay. Will learning labs still be open?
Learning labs, yes, they will still be open. So a student, a family could theoretically just choose, continue to do the learning lab as they are right now.
Will all buildings potentially be open?
That is our goal, yes.
Okay. Sam or Delsa, could you recap kind of in a soundbite, what exactly the metrics are that we will be using to gauge this decision? I just want, I want people who are listening tonight to be able to know exactly what measurements we're looking at.
Well, I'll do it and I'll say something. And Delsa, jump in. I would say that the metrics that were shown on the screen are part of what we would look at. But even more importantly, the COVID coordination team and their recommendations, which as Delsa says, our school nurses would, we would certainly take whatever recommendations they have and how, on how we should look at this data if we're, you know, if we need to look at it differently. Delsa, is there anything you would add?
And I would just add, as we have been, President Lawrence, we will continue to work very closely with Linda Vale and her staff when we take a close look at the fact that Ingham County and then very specifically the communities that are served by the Lansing School District because of disparities due to ethnicity and other demographic factors, we know that we've seen a tendency for cases to be higher. So we want to be sensitive to that. And so we will definitely work with the health department and other medically trained and expert advice on how to move forward. And as Superintendent Sam stated, looking at data in the way that definitely supports or deems a safe return.
Okay. I just have one more comment and then I'm gonna turn it over to some of my colleagues. I noticed that one of my elementary school teachers is in attendance tonight. So hi, Tammy Vallow. I see your name and hope you're doing well. I think it was 4th grade. Anyway, I'm gonna go to Mr. Lopez and then Mrs. Willis and then Mrs. Lilge and then Dr. Rodriguez. Mr. Lopez, take it away.
Unmute.
I'm trying. There you go. Thank you, Madam Chair, President. Two questions. The first one is, how many actual surveys did we receive? What was the number of surveys? What does 25% mean and what does 25% mean?
For students, for students, 25% means approximately 2,400, 2,400 to 2,500 students. We received 4,500 parent surveys and 900 and some change of staff surveys.
So of the community, I'm talking, you know, basically the 25 and 75%. You said about 4,000 or so responses? So those are divided between, okay. So 4,000 out of 9,000. Well, that's true, but thank you. The second question, and this goes to Ms. Chapman, Dr. Chapman. So we're looking at the county as a whole, the statistics, right? Are we able to compare Lansing statistics versus county? Is there, do you have that information?
I don't have that information on this evening, Mr. Lopez. But I'm quite sure working with Sue Willer and Linda Vale, we should be able to gather that data and provide that to the board very quickly.
Because the reason I ask it is because if our Lansing School District data is worse than the rest of the county, we have to think twice about what we're doing or the other way around. So because, because see, we have not had face-to-face teaching at all. So we haven't had the proper So, so we haven't had the problems that maybe other districts have had. But I would like to really compare our own statistics, our district statistics to the county. In my view, and me personally, to make a better decision in supporting whichever decision we're looking at. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Go to Rachel and then Nino and then Robin.
Thank you. So I have several questions and I'll start with asking my clarifying questions on the sample size. So just to clarify, the sample size for the parent survey was roughly forty-five hundred and it's twenty-five percent of that forty-five hundred that said remote, or that said in person, is that correct?
It's twenty-five percent of the total. What we would put on the survey was the last part of the survey that said if you did not respond, that we would assume that that person, that you would want to be remote. So we did everything we could. We were calling people and trying to get some things in. So the, it's twenty-five percent is twenty-five percent of all of our students.
Yes. So twenty-five percent of all of our students, not twenty-five percent of responses?
Correct.
Correct.
So is that seventy-five percent? Seventy-five percent of responses or seventy-five percent of of our student population?
It would be seventy-five percent of our student population.
So we extrapolate it based on our, we extrapolate it based on our responses and basically said if this is representative of our entire school population, is that correct? Do we have the exact breakdown of the responses of folks who, so I guess my question is, did it seem like folks who responded were motivated to respond that they wanted to go to hybrid? Or did they see, did they respond and then respond and say they wanted to stay remote?
Well, we had to see, so I'm a math teacher. About fifty-five to fifty-six percent of the people that, of, of the responses would requested hybrid learning
Okay.
of, of the responses.
Okay.
But once, but I would just, and I'm not trying to play with numbers here, but we, we had to assume that those that didn't respond were going to be in remote. So that's why we look, I mean, we're not trying to, we're not trying to fool anybody here. So we're trying to figure out where we can put kids.
Sure, okay. And that, that, that helps, that, that helps me understand the folks who responded seemed to be motivated by wanting to express that they want it to be a hybrid. Okay. So my next question, I, while you guys were doing your presentation, I was going through and looking at what our neighboring districts are doing. And the majority of our neighboring districts are sort of in the same spot of four days with Wednesday, four day half days with Wednesday being remote learning days. I'm looking at a couple, so a couple of questions. Did we do any extrapolation specific for targeting responses back from our special ed population to see what their input was from those families?
We don't have the, the percentage, but special ed students and students with IEPs, ELL learners are figured, get figured into the process. So for example, when we looked at staff surveys, if a special ed teacher at a particular building wanted it to be hybrid, then we would put that in that building and look at the number of special ed students from that building that wanted to be in per, in person, or hybrid learning, excuse me. So what, and to answer your question, yes, it was taken into consideration.
And if I may add, Ms. Willis, when we filter out the data, we did notice that when we look at just the characteristics or what's associated with an individual student, that was embedded right into how our DII team collected or did the anal, analyzing of the data. And it immediately shows whether or not a student is deemed as special education. So we don't have those numbers total to present to you this evening, but that is something that we can get because that is something that once it was presented to the instructional division, we wanted to be able to know what was the response from that particular population.
And so my next question is about our teaching staff. So I guess, so I guess it's two questions. How is it gonna work for us with self-contained classrooms like a fourth grade classroom? What happens to that teacher's kids that are not in our class? Like what's gonna be the, are we gonna have teachers all dedicated? In-person, a circle, and is how is that gonna work? And then how is it gonna work for our, our pullouts for those classes? Will those all happen only on only on the remote learning days? So that all the kids are doing the same pullout?
I, if I understood it and I, you know, I was actually, I would, never mind. Special ed students or students who have IEPs or other students who need assistance in specialized areas are figured into all of this. So it could be, it could be a combination of remote or screen-to-screen learning and in-person learning or, or could be all one or all the other. It would just depend on how we, how a schedule would be developed for the time that would be required, that's required by through the IEP.
And I'm sorry, I realize I probably didn't answer that question well. I meant like special, so like music.
Oh, sure, oh, okay. And I would, it, it, it's almost the same answer. And, you know, it would, it would depend on the, the scheduling for the, not only the, the the special teachers, but it would also be the scheduling for the students. Some of it almost certainly will be virtual. And I imagine some will be hybrid too. I think it's, it's gonna be a mixture. It'll depend on the staff available and how that works for that particular school or student.
Okay. My next question is about transportation. And I guess I'm gonna probably segue that into that risk mitigation protocol.
We don't have, Dean is not have enough drivers at the moment for all of our bus runs. So doing half-days like this is actually advantageous to us in order to provide transportation for students. Once that happens and we know where a bus stop is at one time, the student's gonna be picked up and dropped off, we will also then, well, actually, Dean is, we would be sending out communication to parents of the, of the bus riders about what the expectations are for those students who are riding the bus. Oh, Delsa, I don't know if I answered that all the way or not. You're muted.
I'm sorry. If I'm understanding your inquiry, Ms. Willis, we have reached out as we were planning and putting together the plan to Dean. And so there are conversations already underway with the number or percentage of students that have elected to be hybrid. That's definitely at, at an advantage because of the spacing that we have to consider. On the social distancing, I should say, on the buses. As well as we started having conversation with Dean a good eight months ago in regards to the routing, the, the cleaning process in between riders being dropped off and then picked up for dismissal. So a lot of that is already in the works. And I know that John and Katie have reached out to Dean within the last twenty-four to forty-eight hours to schedule the next conversation so we can put pen to paper on how we definitely will be moving forward. When that will be in place and solid, we probably would not have an update on that until the beginning of next week.
Okay. And then just another question, Mr. Sinekope. Can you remind us what the current plan for access to vaccination for staff who want it is?
I can. Last week, we're part of, we've talked about before, the Ingham Intermediate School District in conjunction with the Health Department in Michigan State and so on. We were, they tiered, they're tiered, first, second, and third tier for school districts to get the vaccinations for employees to wish to. And we're in the third tier, so we, we got the initial application form last week. Now we're waiting for the second form, which would, is the form to make your appointment to start with. And as you probably know, the, part of the issue right now is that the vaccinations stuff, materials are not as available as they should be right now. And saying all that, we also have had staff who although I'm not asking, have volunteered that they've already gotten a va, vaccination either through Sparrow or some other, some other method. So we're probably a couple of weeks out still before we get our first round through the ISD. So we're waiting like everyone else. Like, I imagine a lot of people on this, on our, at our meetings that have been waiting.
Thank you. Okay, and my final question, I promise I'll yield to my colleagues. Something that would be helpful is if we could see this information with numbers instead of percentages. So it just helps us wrap our head around the scope of what we're looking at as far as scale, especially as it relates to transportation and students who will be physically in schools. I think that helps us get a better understanding of what our risk exposure is, right? So we say, if one, if one building is ten percent of the population, but that's only ten kids, it's a lot different than if we go to another building for ten percent of the population's two hundred kids. So something like that is just helpful for us to get a, and that helps us understand, you know, when we're saying there's gonna be a closure for exposure risk, if we have to do any moving of the kids to an exposure risk, anything like that. It just helps us get a better, on the scale of that.
I think that, thank you, I think that we can, next week is our engagement survey date, and I think we can include it with that, you know, at least some numbers for transportation in the things you're asking for.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Rodriguez and then Robin and then Dr. Burrows. Mr. Lopez, do you have additional questions? Or is your hand just still up?
I'll wait, I'll wait for my turn.
Okay, okay. Dr. Rodriguez, go ahead.
Thank you. I, you cannot see me because the video has been disabled.
We know we're having some video issues with, with panelists this evening. Don't worry about it.
No big deal. And my ugly phrase won't be there. Thank you very much for the work to the team. I was a little bit confused about the metrics and data analysis staff commitment form because I was looking in the graphic. And the graphic, the, the, the yellow, the, and the, the blue one told me remote and you had twenty-four percent. And the other one, the orange, you had seventy-six percent. Then I didn't read the other part, but when I saw the graphic, I was a little bit confused, but I am clear now. Second, and the last question I want to emphasize, how many buildings are going to be open? How many, how many buildings are we are going to be receiving the students?
I would answer that this way, Dr. Rodriguez. Our, our goal is to have every student who wishes to be in a hybrid plan would be at their own school, their home school building. We don't know that, if we, if we can pull that off yet until we start looking a little deeper at the numbers.
And I am also to to put that seventy-five percent of the parents who didn't answer the the questionnaire think that they don't want present instruction. I, I, I had my doubts about that. I think many didn't answer, but they want the kids go to the schools or had to kind of a different kind of the learning. Then my point is, if any, any parents after one week or something like that, they say, I would like my students or my son or my daughters to go to the, to the schools. Can they register or how I, what, what is the process for these parents to send these students to, to this new, to, to the schools?
That process that you're talking about is sort of, I would get, I would say is a work in progress right now because it'll depend on the availability of staff, the availability of, of spots in a particular building right now, which is why we had a, a drop dead date for people for the surveys to be returned so that we could try to start making some, making some further plans.
And I will report later on, but many, many of the dollars, they are coming for federal money and state money are, are, it will be in place if we go to face-to-face instruction. Then, then how we, I mean, I would like to see if the things going better, more people receive the vaccine and the things improve. I would like to see more students going to, to a safe building. And I think the parents should be, should be know about that. I think that, that, that everybody is a suspense and I am waiting, but I appreciate the questions previous to my inter, my interview today. Thank you, my present today. Thank you very much.
Dr. Rodriguez. Robin, go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. Could you just define what the student support center will look like for the seven through twelve high schoolers? Is it a tutoring center? I mean, what is that gonna look like?
I would describe it, and I'm gonna speak briefly and let Dr. Chapman kind of expand on it. But I would describe it as, it may look different at each high school. It's, the high schools are going to be able to have the ability to plan how they may want to do it and how they may want to do it with their students. But we would have staff available for any student. We may invite students and it may be a, a, a time where students could voluntarily come in. But we would have different subject matter people there for assistance. We may bring in a small, a small group of kids that we could socially distance and work with them. It may, it could be special education students. It could be a group of ninth graders that needs assistance. And I, it could be, it could be lots of things, whatever. We'll, we'll put out some parameters, but we want the, the high schools to be able to make it their own. Dr. Chapman, go ahead.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Moore, for asking that question. When we think about the student support centers, we definitely want to offer that support and intervention specific to core content. Within the instructional division, we have worked very hard with our instructional coaches and our steering committee chairs through instructional council to move more towards standards-based instruction. And through standards-based instruction, whatever teacher that I have, if I'm, you know, if I'm going to either of the three high schools through standards-based instruction and standards that are taught within our pacing guides, then the themes or the components of the content at a given time within, let's say, a marking period are the same. And so those core content area teachers that are on-site would be able to speak to, provide assistance to the work associated with our core subjects of math, English Language Arts, Science and Social Studies. As it relates to our special education students, we would still offer support in core areas. But if they have a service such as through speech, if they have OT or O-HI services and things of that nature, those types of supports would also be available at the student support centers at the high school level. So it won't just be Um, if they have OT or O-HI services and things of that nature. Those types of supports would also be available at the student, um, support centers at the high school level. So it won't just be kind of like random homework, let's get help. It will be more structured based on where that student should be. In the learning process for a given course, based on the standards that have been embedded in our pacing guides.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Your move.
Robin, do you have additional questions?
No, all of my questions were answered, I had a question about transportation, that was answered, I had a question about. The schools being open, that was answered, so that was my only question left.
Great, Dr. Burrows.
Hi, I have video, hooray, thanks, thanks for the tech team. Um, thank you all for that presentation, uh, and for all your hard work collecting this data, um, I do have a couple of questions. Um, the first one is, was it clear in the survey that if someone didn't respond, that they would be assumed to be remote?
That was, yes, it was, it was actually, that sentence was. At, you know, after the questions, there was a sentence there that said that, exactly what you just.
Just want to make sure that was clear, so, and, so we can safely assume that people who didn't respond. Um, either didn't care, or they were fine with being remote, it's, it's, it's a reasonable assumption.
You're, you're the, you're the expert on that, I would, I would defer to you.
Well, 50% response rate is pretty good, but when you tell people, hey, if you don't spend the moment to answer the survey. Then we're going to assume you answer X, it, it's not out of the question, you don't know for sure, but. We have to operate on something, so I think that, I think for our purposes, it's a totally reasonable assumption to take. Um, so for purposes of the audience, can you explain? Um, why it is that we're not requiring a vaccine as a condition to teach in the school?
It is my understanding that we can't require it, even, even if we wanted to. Um, it's still, i- i- it's very similar to, uh. Uh, immunizations, if you think about it in that respect, and in, in immunizations, parents. Have a choice at times of whether they would, you know, have their students immunized, it's the same thing right here in terms of vaccinations. I think, to me, I would, I would jump at the chance to have a, have a vaccine, vaccination. But other people don't feel that way, and other people als, but also other people who may not feel that, that way, wear their. Mask every day and say, stay six feet apart from somebody and everything else, so I, I, that really doesn't concern me. Uh, a whole lot whether, whether staff choose to have it done or not.
Yeah, I absolutely agree, I just want to make it clear that, that it's, it's a legal restriction, we're not making a decision because. We don't care, we're, we're making this decision because this is the decision we're legally required to make.
Correct.
Um, so in terms of, um, when we return, um, uh, assuming this is passed. Um, and we do meet our, our metric threshold, and we have students, um, in, in the classroom on a hybrid basis. My understanding, the way you've described it, is that we're placing a priority on having a teachers available. Who are willing to teach in this environment, and that, that, that's the really, that's the prerequisite to having. Classes that are going to be open and, and in person, correct?
Yeah.
Correct.
So it's, it's the teacher's decision individually, whether they feel comfortable returning to in-person instruction.
Correct.
Okay, good, um, so have you thought about, uh, the, uh, an issue of, of. Available substitutes once some people are back in hybrid?
We, we, yeah, I was just talking with somebody about that, like a half hour before the meeting started.
In your mind.
We were, yeah, we, and we were thinking about that, would, you know, for instance, we have some, uh. We call them guest teachers who are employees that, uh, are very capable, and if we had a spot where we needed somebody, we would certainly. Uh, take them into consideration as part of it too. But I think the other, a, a more important question I think you were asking is, what if, uh, Sam Sinicropi is teaching sixth grade somewhere? At Mount Hope, and I'm sick that day, who's, who's going to come in kind of thing? So that's something that we would, uh, rely on our, uh, HR department and. Uh, Miracle Barton, who sends out our subs each day, so we'll, uh, we'll be in contact with her when we get to that.
Now, and I understand that, like, so, because it's important for people to recognize that. You always need more people who are capable of stepping in to teach than you actually have classrooms. Because people are going to get sick, people are going to have home emergencies, you need that kind of labor flexibility. Which is really difficult in conditions like this, so you always need to have a little bit of, of wiggle room. Which was a problem before the pandemic, much less now. Um, uh, my next question relates to, uh, the transportation and CDC protocols. So for the trans, for a transportation protocol, would we be thinking about having a child in every other seat? One due a seat, what's, what's the thinking?
The CDC and their requirements does not require transportation to have, to be socially distant. Now, students are required to wear masks and to be, uh, socially distanced apart if feasible. Um, and I can, I, before I go on, I'll probably, something just Kate, you, you reminded me of something. There was a school district in Ingham County today that canceled classes because of, of lack of subs. And there are at least two school districts in Ingham County closing tomorrow because of lack of subs, and the one superintendent I talked. To said that it's because many of his teacher had their vaccinations this week, and they're not feeling well and some other things, so. And that's not that that happens, but, but it goes back to the lack of subs, there is, it was impossible last year. And it's, it's worse than impossible this year.
The people didn't understand, but, sorry, I, I should have been clear earlier, so I, I, I want to think about the CDC requirements. Separately from the transportation protocol.
Okay.
But what's your idea of what our transportation protocol would be?
Well, in the conversations that we've had with Dean, and I've been involved in a few of them, that we will, uh. We are hoping to have students have temperature checks, maybe at home before they get on the bus. Uh, each student has to have a mask, uh, they have a cleaning, uh, Dean has a cleaning protocol and how that works too, so. That's, uh, their, you know, we'll clean after each bus run is what they, what their intention is. Um, we will supply masks if needed for Dean, and Dean has. Hundreds of thousands right now anyway, off from their business all over the state. Um, I would think that. Being socially distant every other seat is certainly will be a possibility on some of our bus runs. One of our questions in the, uh, commitment survey was, would you need transportation? And not everybody who chose hybrid chose transportation, so our. Transportation numbers are going to be lower than the actual student numbers, uh, from the survey, so I think that we. While not, you know, perfect, in perfect shape, have a shot at, uh. Maybe keeping kids safe, uh, socially distanced on the bus, but, once, once again, it's not a requirement.
Okay, and as for social distance and mask wearing in the schools and, and proper ventilation and. And, and the plan is to adhere to the, the, the most rigorous CDC standards for, for maintaining safety?
Yeah, um, and speaking of air quality and all that, we've talked a little bit about that with, uh. Some of the things that Sodexo is purchasing, and we have them, I believe, on the agenda for next week to talk about, just to cut, very briefly about some of the. Air filtration systems they're, they're installing.
I know that's a concern with some older buildings that, that, that we in other districts have. Um, my, my last question is, what are we going to do if a student or a staff member? Uh, chooses not to adhere to one of these safety protocols?
Well, what do we do to a student who doesn't, uh, follow directions on a, on a regular basis or a staff member? I, I, quite frankly, I, I don't know if I am that concerned about it, I, I was talking to, uh. Grand Rapids started some in-person learning, and they have a, over 90% compliance. Rate wearing masks on the bus right now, so, you know, there'll be some, and we'll have to make sure that we do some education. And make sure that everybody is safe, and that's the whole idea. I see Sue Wheeler looking at me right now, Sue, I, I want to make you proud, um. But seriously, that, i- it could be a problem, and we'll have to deal with it, just like we would deal with any issue where a student is not following directions.
But our, but our expectation is that parents and staff, if they're choosing hybrid instruction, ha, are expected to follow the guidelines.
Absolutely.
For everyone.
Absolutely, yep.
Those are all my questions, thank you very much.
You're muted.
I was just calling on you, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, I heard you.
Thanks.
Oh, okay, um, let me go back again to the survey, two questions on it. So the resp, the number of responses, I don't know if I, I'm having trouble also with my hearing, but. Did you tell me how many students those responses represented?
The responses represent one student, so.
One student.
One student, so 4,500 responses would be 4,500 students.
Okay, okay, so that, that represents a multiple, a family with three, three kids.
No.
So if a family had, uh, has three kids, one in each of the schools. You might have gotten three responses from that same person for a child.
More than likely, we, we would have, yes.
Okay, okay, yeah, thank you, so. So the service, we're sending multiple languages, right?
Yes.
Okay, just to make sure that, that that was, that that happened.
One, one second, Mr. Lopez, Sergio, is that, that is correct, right?
Good evening, the service, what, the, the commitment form was sent in English. And we continue to communicate with our families. Uh, in different languages through phone calls and robocalls, and when we do that, we ask and affirm if they fill the form or not.
But it was only sent in English?
Yes.
Okay, so there was no, no form in Arabic or Spanish or. Did you find any problems with families having received it and not, not able to answer because they didn't understand it?
No, I did not, uh, get any feedback of that type. But, uh, as we continue to call our families, for example, um, we, uh, are. Attempting to, uh, provide the wider assessment to, to, uh, our kids. When we call them and see if the children are going to be able to, uh, come to school to do the test. We also continue to ask, did you fill the, the survey, and if they don't, then we collect that information.
But how many did you collect, do you have an idea?
No, we're starting to, we're starting to make those, those phone calls are going out starting tomorrow. For, um, the children, the youngest kids, K through 3, that are going to be assessed. Uh, in the north side, yeah, at Cumberland Elementary School. So as we continue to move and call for different schools and all that, we will continue to make that question, that question to the parents. And that will be done in nine languages.
So, so that this will add to the responses then, of the survey?
If they did not answer it, yes. If they answer it, then it will not add to the, to responses.
Right.
And our principals at Garner and teachers at Garner also contacted the, the families to make sure that they completed the form, so. Uh, we're pretty confident that many EL families filled it.
Do you think this will change the numbers then?
Yeah, it, it might, we don't know.
Okay, well, that's interesting, so if a teacher. Chooses not to come to teach, uh, in person. And we have number of students, we have more students than teachers are available. Are we going to tell them, we don't have room for you because we don't have teachers? Because they chose not to teach in person?
I don't quite look at it that way, it's not, it's not a, it is a choice, and it's a personal choice. Um, we're going to have, we have plenty of, uh, uh, students who are staying remote, so we're going to need lots of help with that. Um, I, I can't tell you that until we crunch the numbers a little more, though, Mr. Lopez, if, if that, if that. Situation that you said is going to, would happen, I certainly hope not, and this is where some of our guest teachers, I, I would propose, would come in. That if we needed, and we have, you know, 10 to 15 somewhere in there, that number, so we have some, some people who would be able to. Take over a class if needed.
Okay, that, well, that's good, because, uh, you know, I wouldn't want to see a situation where we have students that want to come into person. Learning, and not have a teacher, you know, to take care of them, so. I appreciate that, and Leslie, are you going to talk about sports? Which is the latest press conference today?
Well, it has, doesn't have anything to do with our, of this, with our learning plan, but yeah, sure. We, uh, had made the decision a while back that we were going to participate in winter sports, we've had, uh, uh. Athletes and, uh, coaches, uh, doing conditioning for the last three or four weeks. Uh, the governor made an announcement today that, uh, uh. Winter sports can start co- competitions on February 8th, which is Monday, and I doubt. We don't even have schedules that I'm aware of yet for. Our, for our, uh, sports for winter, but there are certain requirements that students have to do and staff have to do in terms of. Whether they can compete or not, including wearing a mask for any, any, uh, competition that you're, you're able to do that on. So we'll see what happens right now, as, uh, starting Monday. Um, students will be able to, for instance, practice basketball before. It was just an individual type thing, conditioning, running, whatever. So we are going to try, and we also, if, if possible, will, uh, participate in spring sports also.
Thank you, thank you, those are all my questions.
Lopez, Dr. Body.
Good evening, thank you, uh, uh, for every, to everyone for all the work that you're doing to keep our, uh, adults and children safe. Uh, my question is, uh, and I apologize, I don't think this was covered, but in case it was, I apologize. Is there any plan to include, uh, rapid antigen testing? As part of sort of a safety measure, uh, for the adults in the school buildings, teachers, staff, bus drivers? Uh, uh, things of that nature.
Great question, Dr. Body, I just signed us up today for the antigen testing. Um, as you know, there was, there's a program, this, those, those, uh, testings, testing would be provided, uh. Uh, free of charge, I believe, so we don't, we aren't in a, in a position right now where we actually need it, other than maybe some of our coaching staff. So I will be talking, uh, Sue and I actually talked about that a little bit yesterday. So today, and all of a sudden, you know, we could sign up. Even though we may not need it for a while, or, you know, may not use hardly any at all, but I think it's good that we do sign up for it, and it's available when we need it.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from board members? All right. Um, obviously, this, that, any return to a hybrid plan would not happen. For several weeks, of course, just due to vaccinations, vaccination schedules and how those need to be spaced. Um, so I know that we have at minimum a month or so before anything could potentially be implemented. Uh, so if board members would like to adopt this plan tonight, we certainly can do that. Or we can ruminate on this a little bit more, um, and re-approach in, in a couple of weeks, in two weeks, because we have an ISS next week. So if anybody would like to make a motion to adopt, now is your chance, or hold your peace, as they say. Okay, moving on, we're going to move on to report from superintendent.
Adam President.
Mrs. Willis.
I'm sorry, I can't, I couldn't find the function, raise my hand, um. I, I, I just wanted to reiterate that the board, I, I, I at least, I feel very appreciative that we had a chance to receive this information. And review it, and thanks for all the hard work that went into it, and I think that it's helpful for the, um, audience and our families and for the public to. See, like, this is the shells of a plan of what it would look like when we do return to learn, I just think that given. Um, that we don't have an estimated start date, that we don't necessarily have a couple of the other pieces finalized, that I would just recommend that we. Continue to look at and receive information, um, but keep this as the framework for. for our return to in-person instruction plan. So I think I'm just reiterating what I think the silence, interpreting the silence, I'm not making Okay, thank you.
Ms. Dr. Burrows?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Dr. Nathan Burrows, yes, that's fine. Um, no, I, I, I just wanna say, I, I think there's a lot of very strong elements, I like a lot of it, I, I would like to see it a little more flushed out on the transportation side, um, and on the contingency planning side. Um, I'm very concerned um, about sort of enforcement issues uh, and what do, what do you do, and I think it's very clear to set expectations for people about what will happen if they, if they violate some of these rules, and I think we really need to give that some thought, so I like a lot of what's here. Um, and I, I just wanna make that clear, that, that I'm not like, oh, I don't like it, I just, I think that we might need a few tweaks or some things to think through in a little more detail, at least so that we can see and everyone's aware of it.
Yeah, and hopefully with other districts going back slowly, um, we'll be able to essentially learn from their mistakes and things that they're struggling with as well. Thanks, everybody, thanks you, thank you for good questions, good feedback, Dr. Dr. Rodriguez, go ahead.
Thank you, may, maybe between now and the next four weeks or something like that, if I can find some policies about, about this, we will try to get it and, and present that to the board.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know, she, she has some policies about how to deal with this particular situation that we have. Okay.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Report from superintendents. Sam, go ahead.
Um, I wanna congratulate, a couple of things, um, I wanna congratulate Patton Gill, Biotechnical Magnet School, they got a fantastic award this week, uh, from the, what is this place called? The inner, or the, let's see, the International Technology and Eng- Engineering Educators Association, and they became an exemplary school, they had outstanding leadership in the field of STEM education, so we're very proud of Patton Gill for receiving this award, and they also stated here that they received over four hundred points uh, during their rigorous application review, so there is a virtual conference coming up in, in March that they will be honored at, they will also receive a banner that they can have on display, so we're very proud of Patton Gill, and I think Mrs. Lilge is too, I can see her beaming a little bit. Also, reminder, and I know that uh, Dr. Rodriguez will mention this later in his secretary's report, but this year's Lansing School District showcase will be held on February twenty-first virtually from noon to four P M. Those of you that have attended in the past know we've had it for the last few years at Don Johnson Fieldhouse with crowds of people, now will be crowds of people online, excuse me. You'll, and the, the public especially, and the board will be receiving lots of information in the next few weeks about how you can participate in our virtual showcase, we're very excited about it. Um, also, the Lansing School District in cooperation with the Ingham Intermediate School District and the Michigan Department of Education are working together to improve our systems within the school district, specifically, we are in partnership with offering professional development for the staff of our Special Education Department and the Office of School Culture in order for both departments to work together to improve our instructional delivery and assist in social emotional growth. I wanna thank Kamala Diaz and Cordelia Black for leading this uh, this, this uh, event, okay. This time for the did you knows, we are going to do something, uh, we're gonna have, we have a theme, and the theme because February is Black History Month, that will be our theme, and tonight we're gonna talk about former employees of the school district, uh, and some of their achievements. Does that sound pretty close? Uh, we'll start with Mr. Sergio Keck, no, wait a minute, yeah, Sergio, go ahead.
Good evening, uh, what an honor it is to present this person. Dr. Elizabeth Turpin was a teacher at Allen Street and Cedar Street School and school principal at Northwestern, Cumberland, at Atwood, where Mr. Sam, Sam Copri was a custodian at the time, and she completed her career of twenty-two years of principal at Forest View. She worked as a principal for forty years and might have had the longest career as a school principal in the history of the school district. She started the Young Spartan Program with MSU's fo- former president Gordon Guyer and was in the MSU Athletic Council. Dr. Turpin brought the arts in the classroom and was very closely connected with the Wharton Center. She worked for the Lansing School District for fifty-two years before retiring in two thousand and seven. Dr. Turpin earned her BA, EDS, and PhD from Michigan State University and has two endowment scholarships in her name at MSU. She's an alumni of Link's Incorporated and a member of Alpha Kappa Alpha in the Delta Tau Omega Chapter. She's also an active board member of RIF, reading is fundamental, and she continues to be a big member of the community. We are so grateful Dr. Turpin spent so many years educating the children of the Lansing School District, thank you.
Thanks, Sergio, Susie Corbin.
Thank you, Sam. Did you know Ms. Diana Rouse began with the Lansing School District in nineteen seventy-two and served as a teacher, principal, director of elementary ed, area director, and deputy superintendent for the Lansing School District? She was the youngest principal in the district at age twenty-six. Diana attended Wilberforce University, a historically black college where she was recruited by the Lansing School District, and lucky for us, she called Lansing her home. Diana served as a former president for Alpha Kappa Alpha Lansing Chapter, making her sorority sister to our own Dr. Chapman. Thank you.
Thank you, Susie, uh, Cordelia Black.
Thank you, did you know Mr. Fred Whiting was a trailblazer for African-Americans following behind him? He was hired in nineteen seventy-five as a teacher at Horse Brook Elementary School, right here in the Lansing School District. Who knew? I had never heard of that school. In nineteen seventy-six, Mr. Whiting was the assigned principal to open the newly constructed Vivian Riddle Elementary School. He served as a principal at several schools during his career, including Waxford, Grand River, and Mount Hope, Mr. White, Whiting was a diamond in the rough. Known by all as a gentle giant who soared in his career becoming elementary and secondary education director until retiring in nineteen ninety-nine. Mr. Whiting is married to Irma Whiting, also a retiree from the Lansing School District. Mr. Whiting's community involvement includes his membership with Baptist, or excuse me, Friendship Baptist Church, NAACP, and the Kappa Alpha Psi fraternity. Thank you for your service to the students and families of Lansing, Mr. Whiting.
Thank you, Cordelia, you didn't mention that uh, he was my boss for several years, and, and in one time I interviewed with him and he didn't hire me, but we're still great friends, a great guy, uh, John Lang, go ahead.
Thank you, Sam, good evening, did you know Shirley Rogers was a longtime member of the Lansing Board of Education, first elected in two thousand and seven? Ms. Rogers most recently served as treasurer, also held other positions, including president of the board. Ms. Rogers also served as the board's liaison to several schools, as well as the district's junior board. It's all after retiring from the district after more than thirty years of working in the business office. Ms. Rogers graduated from Michigan State University and is often said she bled green and white. Ms. Rogers also served as the president of the MSU Black Alumni Group in its formative years. Ms. Rogers' involvement in the community extended beyond the Lansing School District, among the organizations she was a member of are the Ingham County Rural Commission, the Tri-County Regional Planning Commission, City of Lansing Public Service Advisory Board, and she served twelve years on the Lansing Community College Board of Trustees, thank you.
Thank you, John, uh, Kamala Diaz.
Good evening, thank you Superintendent, and good evening to the board and community. Did you know that Dr. Olivia Letts was the first African-American educator to be hired in the Lansing School District? A consummate optimist, Dr. Letts lobbied friends and local citizens for a position in the Lansing School District after initially being turned down. We had no idea the gem we almost passed up. After being hired in nineteen fifty-one as an upper elementary grade teacher at Lincoln Elementary School, Dr. Letts spent the next ten years pushing for school desegregation and more opportunities for teachers of color. Then in nineteen sixty-one, she became Lansing's first African-American principal at Post Oak Elementary. Dr. Letts continued her own education as a member of Alpha Kappa Alpha while focusing on expanding the educational opportunities for her students. She earned her master's degree in education, her ed specialist degree in education administration, and her doctorate in curriculum, all at Michigan State University. Dr. Letts culminated her career with the Lansing School District as the director of elementary education. We lost her this week at age ninety-three, she will be missed, thank you.
Thank you, Kamala, uh, Dr. Chapman, Delsa Chapman.
Good evening, did you know Dr. Eva L. Evans achieved many firsts, both professionally and civically? Born as a Southern belle in Memphis, Tennessee, Dr. Evans moved to Detroit at an early age and ultimately made Lansing, Michigan her home. After earning her BS degree from Wayne State University, Dr. Evans was further credentialed with MA and PhD degrees from Michigan State University. Regarding firsts, Dr. Evans was the first woman named deputy superintendent of Lansing School District. Prior to this distinct leadership position in education, Dr. Evans served as a classroom teacher, school administrator, and division director. From a civic stance, Dr. Evans was the first, either in gender and or ethnicity as chairman of the Tri-County United Way, vice chairman of the Lansing Board of Water and Light, chairman of the Lansing Community College Foundation, Sparrow Hospital Women's, Women's Board of Managers, and Michigan State University, I'm sorry, College of Education Board of Trustees. Dr. Evans received a governor appointment to serve on the Michigan Council for the Humanities and was chairman of the Michigan Department of Civil Rights. In two thousand and six, Dr. Evans was indebted into the Michigan Women's Hall of Fame and received numerous local, regional, and national awards for her leadership and service. Dr. Evans is renowned internationally for her service to Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated as she served as the twenty-fourth international president from nineteen ninety-four to nineteen ninety-eight. The Lansing School District and Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated cherish and dedicate her legacy through the services rendered at the Dr. Eva L. Evans Welcome Center. A landmark that represents her caring spirit for every life she encountered. Dr. Evans will be remembered and missed, thank you.
Thank you so much, and what we'll do for our next did you knows, we'll probably talk about some, not probably, we're gonna talk about some black uh, students, so for Black History Month, we'll talk about students. Uh, I thought it was kinda interesting, just as a side note, I think all six of those people were my boss at one time or another, so, you know, I remembered them all. Um, but I wanna say just a couple of quick words about Dr. Letts, who passed away this week. Um, I just wanna add my sentiments, she was an icon to me and also the Lansing School that she put in our entire community. Her and her husband, Dick Letts, spent many years, the two of them, for the betterment of our community, and I can't say enough about that. She was a person of high integrity and down-to-earth, even after retirement, I appreciated my opportunities, I had to speak with her, so she will be missed. Uh, I just wanted to, I wanted to get that in there, uh, Olivia and Eva, who've also gone, it's, they're gone way too soon, they're two people that will will never be duplicated within the school district. Uh, Madam President, that includes, concludes our report.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Willis.
I just wanted to thank you all for that very thoughtful did you knows, and for recognizing our local heroes and especially in honor of Black History Month, and I'm gonna not claim any nepotism for the number of AKAs that were recognized in that um, did you know, but I figured this will just like, should have been a big red, maybe AK is just
That's a comment in the personnel report.
And that's just the type of so thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
That was really, really cool, and if you wanna do that every Thursday night for the rest of my life, I would be happy with that, that was, that was awesome, thank you. Um, moving on to routine matters and old business for this evening, we have committee reports, I'll start with the facilities committee and our new chair, Mr. Guillermo Lopez.
Madam Chair, we did not have a meeting, um, the last few weeks, our next meeting is uh, next week or week after that, but uh
Okay, um, personnel committee, Mrs. Willis, I just wanna point out one little thing before we get started, I see that Jamil Cooper will be a coach at Sexton, I believe that Mr. Cooper and I graduated from high school together, that would be J W Sexton, so as, as you say, Mrs. Willis, should have been a big red, um, is there anything else that you would like to
I mean, I guess
report for that committee?
That's it, there really is nothing to add, we're gonna big red back at Sexton. Then we have a personnel report included in today's board packet, there are some um, new hires for board approval and one tenure um, being achieved today, that is for board approval, and then as
Thank you, Mrs. Willis, we have equity committee, back to Mrs. Willis.
Thank you, I just wanted to share with the board today that the equity committee did meet, um, and after reviewing um, all of the firms and references and interviews and very thoughtful, thought-provoking discussion, the equity committee would like to recommend to the board this evening that the board approved the proposal that was submitted by West Ed. Um, West Ed is headquartered in Calif- in San Francisco, California. However, they do have over a dozen offices nationwide, um, and so they would be um selecting a team that's best suited for the Lansing School District, most of whom were present at the interview and the committee was able to meet. Um, and so there is a recommendation um, that the board um, have further discussion regarding the, the RFP um, with the recommendation that the board so uh, support the recommendation of going with West Ed. Um, certainly I'd be happy to um, answer any questions either at this time or during our discussion uh, time later on in the agenda. And I certainly would also be open to uh, Dr. Burrows or Dr. Chapman um, as members of that committee, if there's anything that they would like to add.
It's been a great process, it's a great committee, they're all extremely engaged, I'm proud to be on it, it, it's going swimmingly, and I can't wait to keep, keep moving forward.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, um, policy committee, Dr. Rodriguez. You're muted, Dr. Rodriguez? We cannot hear you, Dr. Rodriguez.
Okay, sorry, thank you, Madam President, uh, the policy committee didn't meet, and, and I had the other report for the ISOA that we met last, um, yesterday, and then for about one hour and a half, and the first presenter was Jennifer Smith for the Michigan Association School Board, and she talked for about half an hour, all the things that are going on in the legislation, and the, with the legislators and board education and all the money they are going to be as, um, giving to the schools because of the pandemic, and how they are going to budget the districts this year different than the other years. I always send to all of you the minutes because I don't want now to tell you numbers and all that, because it's going to change, you know, and the capital change that all the time. But I will, as soon I had them, the minutes, I will send them to you. Uh, also, uh, Ingham County has a new deputy, a new deputy superintendent, and she was presented to all of us, the majority of the board, and majority of the district The majority of the board, a majority of the district were present. And every district is dealing with the pandemic differently. If you are close to Lansing, they are having less face-to-face instruction. If you go farther, like Willie Stone, Weberville, and Leslie, and Dasville, they are more inclined to have face-to-face instruction. But if we go to Weberly, they are going to start something similar to us. You go back to Okemos, still didn't start, they are going to start soon. But it was interesting to find out the different communities seeing the face-to-face instruction a little bit different. Then we also started electing you, I mean, electing the president, vice president, and secretary of the group. And I think it was a very productive meeting, but I will send to all of you all the minutes that will happen there. I will be happy to answer any question.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Okay, if there are no questions, we'll move on to our consent agenda for this evening. Our consent agenda includes the receipt and approval of the personnel report and the approval of the January twenty-first, two thousand and one regular board meeting minutes. May I have a motion?
Madam President.
Dr. Rodriguez.
I move the education, board education approved the consent agenda as presented.
It's been moved by Dr. Rodriguez, supported by Dr. Burrows. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
Dr. Burrows?
Yes.
Mrs. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mrs. Lilge?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Willis?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much. Moving on to new business and discussion items for this evening, we have, as previously mentioned, the Equity Committee audit firm presentation. And Mrs. Willis, I'll just turn it right over to you.
Thank you. I realize in my earlier presentation, I failed to highlight some of the key things about why this firm was selected. So one of the reasons why this firm stood out above the rest is they are a large expansive organization that was very culturally responsive, gave lots of great answers as they were able to explain their capacity to make equity something that was systemic and something that we would be incorporating across the entire education system and not maybe just looking at curriculum or just looking at hiring practices, but rather how it would be embraced across systems. They have an expansive network and their plan of attack, for lack of better words, forgive me, I'm just not thinking of a good way to phrase it, but their plan of attack, if you will, is very steeped and grounded in literature and academia and research-based, which gave us a lot of confidence in why this organization would be best suited to meet the needs as was outlined in our RFP. It does come with a pretty hefty price tag of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The majority of that work, ninety thousand dollars of that, is the assessment and collection phase in the report, and thirty thousand dollars of that breaks down into their sustainability planning. They have a great diverse skill set of folks that they would be bringing to the table as part of their team and working through this project remotely. We know that'll be a little bit of a challenge, but they are going to be able to adapt and facilitate the gathering phases of what we need to start this process even remotely. So what the Equity Committee recommends is that the board adopt the recommendation to enter in the contract with West Ed. And then we would begin conversations with them as far as next steps, timelines, what would they need to begin that work. So with that, I will take any questions. It is on the agenda today as a discussion item, new business. I understand the board typically likes to receive information at the first meeting and then act on it at the next meeting. So certainly, I'm happy to let that be our process that board members would prefer.
Thank you very much. I was very, very impressed reading the proposal and how they cover a lot of the great things that we need to cover. It's incredible. But also the six different points or different topics that they are going to give us the results. I think they are very, very important, and I think it was necessary to do in the Lansing School District. The congratulations to the group, they are dealing with something that I said before, that should be in our meetings all the time. If there's no any more questions, I will make the motion that the board education approved the Equity Committee selection of West Ed to perform an equity audit in detail in the address.
It's been moved by Dr. Rodriguez, supported by Mrs. Lilge. I just want to say, I really appreciate the work that the committee has done. I received those RFP responses, so I know how many we got. It was a lot, and I'm sure that was a huge job to wade through all of that information. So thank you for doing that. And I also just want to comment that our Did You Knows tonight really show the long legacy that the Lansing School District has of being committed to equity in the district and to promoting equity and reexamining demographics and curriculum to make sure that we are walking the walk and to make sure that we're reinvesting in a dynamic and diverse district. So I'm very proud of us for taking these steps, which I think are proactive steps, but they're wonderful things to do. So thanks again to the committee. Mrs. Lilge, do you have a comment or question? Go ahead.
Yeah, just another comment. You know, as somebody who grew up in the suburbs where, you know, it wasn't invested in, it wasn't talked about. I'm kind of old, too, so it was a lot, you know. It wasn't talked about as much as it is these days. But, you know, I just wish that, well, I hope that this will set a precedent and an example for other boards to go, oh, okay, we can invest, we can really invest a good chunk of money and make this a big priority and take a deep look at ourselves and our systems and figure out how to be better. So I appreciate, I just appreciate the effort and the will of this board and this executive team. Thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Lilge. Dr. Burrows?
Now, I'm the one. Okay. I just wanted to say, first of all, that West Ed's a great organization, a sometime professional rival, but rival is the incorrect term because they always win when I've gone up against them. But we can expect a really strong product. I would be remiss if I didn't mention that our esteemed former board member, Dr. Beverly, played a critical role in pushing this forward, and he's continued to be very engaged. And I think he deserves some recognition for sort of putting this on the agenda and pushing this forward. So I just want to thank him for his work, and he'll be part of the team as we move on.
I know he's not watching, so we'll send him a text later and say, you got a shout-out and thank you. Mr. Lopez.
Yeah. Oh, well. Yes, West Ed was a very good contract. I think it's going to be great. But I'd like to just say thank you to Rachel because she really took care of that committee. And even though I was unable to be at the last meeting, I know she kept us informed and did a lot of the legwork for the committee. So thank you, Rachel, and we will continue to move on, seeing this project through. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody. Any other comments? Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Body?
Yes.
Dr. Burrows?
Yes.
Mrs. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mrs. Lilge?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Willis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to it.
Madam President.
Mrs. Willis?
Can I just take a point of privilege to thank the board for that vote of confidence in doing that? And to what Dr. Burrows said, that team has worked very hard and has been very invested and very committed to wanting to do this work well. And so this board of confidence and supporting the recommendation is very much appreciated. So I just want to thank you that and thank all of our committee members for their work getting us this far. And now we're so excited to go, okay, now we're going to start putting some investment into this, and that's very exciting. So thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Willis. Moving on to a report from Secretary and Announcements, Doc.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Wednesday, February ten, two thousand and twenty-one, Sex Education Advisory Board, eight-thirty a.m. to eleven-thirty a.m. Wednesday, February ten, two thousand and twenty-one, Parents University. Why is my child so anxious? Time, five-thirty p.m. to six-thirty p.m. Cost, free. See Lansing School District website to sign up. Thursday, February eleven, two thousand and twenty-one, information study session via Zoom at six p.m. See Lansing School District website for Zoom meeting link. Friday, February twelve, hot day of the school. Monday, February fifteen is President Day, that we don't have school that day. Tuesday, February sixteen, pickup meeting, Parents Community Council, six p.m. to eight p.m. See Lansing School District website for details. Thursday, February eighteen, two thousand and twenty-one, regular board meeting via Zoom at six p.m. See Lansing School District website for Zoom meeting link. On Sunday, February twenty-first, please. Sunday, February twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, Lansing School District virtual showcase. It's so much that you can learn and achieve in Lansing School District. Please see more details to come. I had two other things I can announce, Madam President.
Yep, go ahead.
Every four years, the Ingham County Clerk and all the clerks around Ingham, about six or seven, and the Lansing Clerk and the Secretary of Lansing School District, they meet to review all the procedures and forms that we do for the elections. Starting next election, two thousand, whatever, two years, the person who, the people who wants to run for Lansing School District, they need to register now in Lansing Clerk office, but in the Ingham County Clerk office. That is the only change. That from now on, we had to, for this seventy days before we announced that the board has opening and they want to apply, we will, don't go to the city. We had to go to the Ingham County Clerk for that. Finally, I almost cried when you mentioned all these names about Blood History Month because being with all of them for so many years, and I tell you, we are missing thousands of them. It's impossible to go over. Starting for Superintendent Prophet, Carnegie, you're talking about Big Red? You had one over there, and many, many others that I lived with them. And I tell you, they are examples for all of us. Then I am more attracted to them coming. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Rodriguez. Two quick things I want to point out to board members. In your packet this evening, you've received board assignments. Those are certainly not set in stone. If anyone has any suggestions or feedback, please send me a text or an email. If you want to make any tweaks to it, I'm happy to hear what you think. Also, I'll be sending an email to the board. We will have a virtual retreat on February twentieth. I have been remiss in not informing you of this date until now. I apologize. You can probably hear one kid throwing up tonight, sorry. But February twentieth, plan to be at least in front of your, probably in front of your screen. More information to come on that. Any other comments or announcements this evening? Okay. Thank you, everybody. With no more business before the board, we are adjourned at seven forty-six.